Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of January 8th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers in City Hall. If you can't watch, quickly catch up on the City Council meetings by subscribing to the Council Debrief Newsletter. It breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Stay weather aware this week, Lee Summit. Do so by signing up for the city's free alert system, LS Aware. Receive emergency and non-emergency information by text, email, or phone such as snow updates and road closures. You choose how you want to be notified. Learn how to sign up on the city's website. The city is hiring. Join our team at the city of Lee Summit. The city offers rewarding career opportunities, a positive environment, and fantastic benefits. View these opportunities at lspopel.net. And stay connected with the city. We have several email newsletters to keep you informed about everything going on in Lee Summit. The Council Debrief recaps City Council meetings. The City Portal has the latest news and information about the city. And the flyover is your one stop shop for airport news. You can subscribe to all of these on the city's website. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's the finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it.
This month's Councilmember Spotlight is all about Mayor Bill Baird. Check it out.
I have always volunteered in the community and I was always really involved, but then I ran for school board. Whenever I got done with my term, I just felt like I had more to give. It's always been my goal from day one is to get everyone in the community connected and working together. And I always called it a spirit of community. Well, mayor's 24/7 and I have a job. I've had to work really hard at compartmentalizing is what I call it. So during this time, I'm going to do work. During this time, I'm going to be a mayor, even though I can get a call at any moment about mayor stuff. And so I've had to even work that much harder at setting aside time for myself or for family. So I like to exercise. I like to work out. Hillary's my wife. She actually goes to work out with me as well. We do like to go downtown to the shops. We make sure we maximize our time together. I've got two kids as well and we spend a lot of time with them or whatever time they will give us these days. And I have a dog. I think most people that know me know I have to have a dog. We have so much development going on and we're growing fairly quickly, so we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And sometimes we have gaps in infrastructure and we've always managed to get by, but with this kind of growth, we're really having to be creative and look at our options and just have a good plan for water, sewer, roads, and more. If we want to grow the most healthy way, we need a diverse economy. We do have a lot of retail that's opened up here and there's been new construction for retail. We really need to focus in the future on bringing some well-paying jobs here, good strong employers that want to be located in this incredible community of now 101,000 people. A lot of our workforce does commute to work still, so they leave Lee Summit to go to work. And it'd be nice if we could keep some of those citizens right here in our community. The times I feel most proud are actually when I'm in the community and I see the community come together.
We have Buddy in the house.
It's the mayor.
The tree lighting is always very fun. I always feel very proud. It's just a great warm feeling. The same thing goes for when the council will do something and we come together and make a good decision together. There's been a few of those that I just, you go home feeling like a winner. And one of them was when we put together the downtown Farmer's Market, when we bought the land and it became real, you know, all that hard work. But also the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, that was months and months of discussions and conversations that were really hard to have. And we went ahead and moved forward as a council altogether and I was very, very proud of that. And there are a few things that the citizens have done that have really helped us tremendously. First, in the middle of a pandemic, they passed a use tax, which is a way for us to collect sales tax whenever someone purchases online. That helps shore up our revenues so that we can continue to provide those high-quality services that our city provides. And it helps us take care of our employees. It helps us with our public safety and more. So I can't be more thankful to the citizens for that. Lee Summit has the opportunity to have a major impact on the economy in the Kansas City area. We already as an economy are rolling along with such a high median income. We have an amazing workforce here that are paying taxes. They're paying property taxes. They're paying sales taxes. They're keeping our economy rolling and we really are getting the attention of all our neighbors. And I think that what's going to happen is you're going to see the opportunity for us to really get everybody's attention when businesses start moving here, bigger businesses and more. So you should try to find a way to give back to the community, whether it's at the city level, citizen committees, or just participating in some of our community conversations whenever we have those opportunities. It's worth coming out of your shell or taking that leap of faith and just showing up and saying, what can I do or how can I help? The more that we do this together, the more wonderful the community is.
Thanks for watching the Lee Summit rundown. I'm Laura Ingraham. See you next time.
Welcome, everybody. Would you please stand for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather as members of the Council for the city of Lee Summit and staff and those who are here to participate in our meeting this evening. The warmth we enjoy in our building is, it is quite cold outside and we're grateful. Opportunities we have to joy our community. Pray for those who are traveling and who are on the road and some who might be in danger. We pray blessings to be upon them and upon their people. Pledged by the city who help and others who... Pray that as we counsel together tonight, that our minds will be sharp. We will be able to answer questions that need answering. Grateful to return again after a holiday season. Pray for other members of our council, councilmembers and...
I am the United States of America, public for which it stands, one nation.
Right. Thank you and again, welcome. We had a little bit of delay. We're doing a hybrid meeting tonight. So many of us are in person, but we also have quite a few on Zoom tonight. So I'm calling to order the city of Lee Summit Regular Session number 60. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here.
All right, that will take us to the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda? I do have a motion from Councilmember Shields to approve the agenda, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
I'm an aye, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember DeMaro's an aye. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I get a motion. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember DeMaro's an aye. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It also passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is the Proposed Ordinances First Reading. I did skip a page. Thank you, sir. Next is the Council Roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in your district. Yes, I know it's snowing, but you know, there could be something else. Does anybody have any news? Councilmember Felker.
Not news, but I just, I saw that the press release went out for the MLK celebration. I don't know if you were going to say something on it, but I see it's coming up next week on the 15th.
Yes, it's Monday at, what time is that?
5:30.
5:30.
Pavilion.
Yes, John Knox.
Just looking forward to that.
Thank you. That's weird. That'd be... We had two Mondays off and Monday's going to be a holiday. Three out of four. All right. On the roundtable, Mr. Dunning, what's the snow update website?
So the website is lsno.net.
Lsno.net. Thank you. So everybody can check that out. This was a, I'm not sure what our categories are, but this is what we call a 48-hour cleanup because it was so, it kept coming until noon today and then it's, I don't know, six plus inches.
And the blowing snow and just the heaviness of this snow, right? The weight of this snow. It all presents different challenges. Each snowstorm is a different one to fight and we take different procedures in the snow fight. So yeah, it's a tough one.
And we're going to have to hit the roads numerous times to be able to get it all.
Yep, given the amount of moisture, right? The brine, we don't use it and so we'll need to use salt, but with the amount of moisture to put salt down, we've got to plow first and then we go into treating.
Right. I just want to make sure people know that we do give updates on lsno.net. So thank you. All right, that will take us to public comments. We don't have any public hearings tonight. Do we have any public comments?
And Mayor, I've not received any requests for public comments.
Thank you. Then we will go into presentations and this is not a public hearing. It's a conceptual, so it's a development incentive request by, for Bayberry Crossing, Shopping Center, Proposed Community Improvement District, and LCRA Redevelopment Plan. Bayberry Crossing baseline LLC will be the applicant when it becomes formal. There's no swearing in, but let's just keep in mind, we're always trying to do fact finding. Mr. Elam?
Mayor Members Council, good evening. Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager. Before we get started tonight, I just wanted to kind of briefly go over kind of why we're here at this stage in the process. So we are here for a conceptual incentive request and per our economic development incentive policy, the conceptual incentive process is an opportunity for a developer to bring forward really an idea. It's been vetted, if you will, but not fully. So there are still details that need to be figured out. This is an opportunity to get feedback in a less formal manner that can help provide direction on changes necessary in order to bring forward a final complete proposal. So with the application tonight... So, with the application tonight, it's a pre-application, essentially, if you will. There will be some plans, but those plans are subject to change with the final outcome of the project. As we move through the process, pending the feedback given tonight, the developer will have the option of to, whether or not to continue on, and prepare formal documents, further define those details, and then come back for the formal public hearings, and in this case, it would be a Community Improvement District Cooperative Agreement. At that stage is when additional details will be fully vetted out and included in contract documents at that time, if you will. I'm trying to get the doc cam to work, because I have a flowchart, but that doesn't appear to be working, so no worries on that. So, again, just seeking general guidance from the council on the overall proposed kind of path forward. So, with that, I'll turn it over to, and Mr. Bushak will go after that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kurt Peterson with Pulse Nelly, here on behalf of the potential developer for this project, which would be Baseline Group. I also have to take a pause and say there would be a very talented woman that would be with me named Katie Schlickman, with one of Baseline's directors, but she lives in Colorado, and she was just texting me earlier, absolutely distraught, after we've worked on this for months and months, and she's not standing here with me, but I said that I would look at each one of you, and that I, to some degree, know you all, and know that you understand that she's watching right now and listening, but she's not in the room with us because of the weather. So, Katie wanted to be here, but she's with us here in spirit, but let's get into who Katie really works with and for, which is Baseline, always starting with who's the possible partner here that would be coming to Lee's Summit to make a big investment. Baseline Group is based in Denver, where Katie lives, and has 20 years' experience, focused on really one thing. This isn't one of the developers that comes in and is good at many things, or focuses on at least many things. This is somebody that focuses on one thing, and that is neighborhood shopping centers, both buying them and then managing them for the long term. The mantra that you'll hear if Katie was talking to you across the table for coffee, or you were talking to one of the other directors, they would say this, it's repeated again and again, including on their website, that we aim to create community value. These neighborhood centers that they invest in for the long term, with their restaurants and neighborhood services, sometimes grocery stores, the, they really ha, are the commercial lifeblood of neighborhoods. These centers really have an impact on just the daily gathering and buying and selling for neighborhood groups. So, Baseline knows that when they buy, they buy these shopping centers, that the way they manage them, the way they tenant them, the way they operate them, really does have an effect on, on families' lives. So, that's what they're about. In terms of their resume and experience, Baseline is national in its reach, and what it does, you can see on the map, the various colors indicate places that they have projects, states they have projects. They now have 126, I learned that, going to press, this was a slightly outdated slide, they now have 126, not 121, neighborhood shopping centers in the United States, and it constitutes more than 4.2 million square feet, now about 4.5 million square feet. When you look at the average purchase price, because you can see the investment there on the front end when they acquire these centers, you can see, if you did math quickly in your head, we're talking about $5 million-type shopping centers on average. So, these really are your neighborhood shopping center. This isn't Costco. These are centers that are often nestled right near where people live. So, in terms of Missouri, again, I could have picked any state, but we're here, I thought, give you a little glimpse, maybe you'll recognize one of these centers. There's actually another one in the St. Louis area that was just acquired that's not on here. When you kind of pass your eyes through here, you can see the one that's the subject tonight is the second one at the top, second from the left, Bayberry Crossing. But you can see what I'm saying in terms of size, right? These are neighborhood shopping centers. Our project, which again is Bayberry Crossing, is located on the east side of 291, just north of US 50, so you can see the zoom out on your left, you can see how 50's swooping down there, and it's just south of the blue area. Then we zoom in on the graphic on your right, and you can see it's on the Feta Road Melody Lane, and it's that green-tinted, one-building shopping center, kind of that serpentine shape. That's the, the shopping center that we're talking about tonight. The site is 5.2 acres in size. It has, again, a single building with a leasable square footage, all small shops of approximately 54,500 square feet. At present, 20% of the shopping center is vacant, 80% is leased up. The current tenants, as you can see, some of them even called out in that image from Google Maps that are on your screen, you can see it's really neighborhood services, as I said, whether it's eating or, or non-eating services, it's all focused on neighborhood. So, what I want to put on the screen now is, and Ryan is right, that there's, there's still work to be done here, but there's a lot of work that went into trying to come up with, what can we do to this center to really transform it visually? And, so, I'm gonna put up some before and after images. The before is obvious, it's today, photos from the shopping center, and the after is the architect working with the client to figure out what could we do here within the budget that I'll present at the end, and the proposed CID. So, is every little detail right? No, there could be some enhancements, we could change something here, but we've been working with staff and making sure to flag all the details, and it's your prerogative tonight, depending on how deep you want to go, we can talk about as much detail on these slides as you want. So, I'm gonna put a couple of these up now. So, the big idea, as you look at these slides, is to take this center in, the best verb I could come up was reinvigorate it in a meaningful way. So, the intent is to give it a totally different look for the user, and, and just a higher quality look. As we've done projects like this in Lee's Summit, there's been a handful, I know that I've been a part of, that are very, very similar to this, a few others that have happened as well, it's really had a big impact when, when they're done, at least the ones I've been a part of, on the shopping center and the area, and certainly outside Lee's Summit, some of these neighborhood shopping centers that we kind of rebirth, or what have you, reimagine through CID's, it has a huge impact, even spreading to how people feel about the neighborhoods that are adjacent, right? And people putting more money into their houses, and kind of having a ripple effect. So, with these photos, some of the things you're seeing, you're seeing totally new facade treatments and materials on the building, you're seeing all-new building signage, you're seeing planters and benches, you're seeing all-new building and parking lot lighting, LED, you're seeing irrigated landscaping along the street and in the parking lot islands. To the end here, we'll see some of the landscaping. Trying to show you all the different angles of the main facade of the building facing Melody Lane. And again, we can go back to these at the end if you'd like to, and we can discuss them. When I show landscaping, I'm gonna show this, and then one more slide that highlights landscaping. The idea was not that this is a renderers' quick and dirty, we have not chosen the specimen of plants and all of that. This is to indicate every location that we would be re-landscaping and irrigating, so don't get caught up, please, on the type of flower, or whether that looks fake or real in the rendering. So, you can see there, and then here is straight from the landscape, landscaping company, again, indicating the location of all the landscaping and the irrigation, at least some of the locations here on this slide. So, in addition to the areas I just wrote off, that would be the focus of the capital investment. There'd be capital investment in other building and site infrastructure, vacant spaces right now, like I said, 20% vacant, trying to whitebox those and attract tenants, site infrastructure that you can't see, tenant improvements and inducements that you certainly need whenever you get a new retail tenant these days, all these are costs that would, that, to pull this off, to rebirth the center that the developer is gonna have to incur. And at the end of the day, the look and the feel and the identity of the shopping center will be transformed. That is the singular goal with this project. The next slide is getting your bearings in terms of the incentives policy, whether, where this falls in terms of what the policy dictates are the priority areas. This does fall within the Missouri 291 North Targeted Planning Area. The, this has been earmarked, you know, for an appropriate area for this kind of transformational reinvestment through the incentive tools that the city offers. It also falls within, you've seen this map many a time, this is the 50-291 Urban Renewal or LCRA map, and you can see the blue arrow there indicates that this center does fall within our overall LCRA, which builds to the proposed public-private partnership that we're here to talk to you about, and then hopefully hear your feedback on tonight. So, the proposed incentives tonight would constitute two. One is a Community Improvement District, a CID, with a 1% CID sales tax. The second is a, an LC, it's already in the LCRA, but getting a sales tax exemption certificate to help reduce the upfront cost of the investment by not having Missouri sales and use tax. Those are the two. This is not a massive development project, but just like other shopping center transformations that have been completed in the city, approval of these incentives really is what makes it happen. It makes it a reality, it makes it pencil, and... The reason that, in this specific instance, when you have a neighborhood shopping center, and you say, "Gosh, this incentive doesn't look that big," perhaps some of you are saying that, as we precursor to looking at the sources and uses, the context here for a center like this is that the tenants are always gonna be small restaurants and small retailers, local retailers, you just don't, it's always my exaggerated example, but the Apple Store doesn't come here. It doesn't matter what you do to the facades and all that, it doesn't happen. But that's okay. In fact, this particular client, you saw, it's been extremely successful for the middle half of the country, north and south, with tons of investments, beautiful shopping centers. That's not their goal. That's good, we all want to go to the Apple Store, but this is for people to come eat and have neighborhood services and a place to gather. So, just trying to get a sense, you can't get higher rents, right, to speak of. You don't go grab really high rents, that's not the point of doing a project like this. The point of a project like this is not to land the Cheesecake Factory, right, or some big national credit or national retailer. The goal, the financial goal of the center is a long-term, I'm a baseball guy, it's a single, and that's not anything to be ashamed of, you saw the volume, it's to have a lot, do it really well, and get singles. These aren't high rents. So, when it comes to a project like this, if you can't increase rent, right, to speak of, there is 20% vacancy they want to fill, you can't spend millions of dollars and get a low return, I mean, you won't financially survive. That's why you've seen projects like the ones we brought to you that are retail centers like this, it literally doesn't make sense. I've had a couple in my career in Kansas City, where I won't necessarily name the city and the exact project, but I'll think of one, that's like at Main and Main, in sort of South Johnson County, that was all about bringing a national retailer to replace this restaurant in the corner, it totally transformed what was already an A center into an A+, and it has, not the Apple Store, but, you know, that kind of tenant, and there's higher rents, and it's a, just a different, totally different scenario than we have here. This is transform this center in a way where a client doesn't lose money, meaning they won't do it without it, not a huge amount of incentives, but it's transformative for people that live there and live around it, much like the projects that, like, similar to this that we've done in the past. The next slide I wanted to show you was the sources and uses. This is a budget that covers the full scope of the items anticipated by the developer right now, that were shown in the renderings. The CID sales tax is anticipated, as you can see in the sources and uses, it's that far-right column, is anticipated over time to generate approximately 1.45 million-plus interest, we always do net present value like every other presentation, so 1.45 million in reimbursement of costs. And you can see, in terms of where those line up, it's not meant to reimburse just anything, it's meant to reimburse the, the building work, right, all that facade work, the landscaping and the irrigation, the signage, the LED lighting, the amenities like the benches and planters, so all those things you're really seeing in those images that I showed on the screen, that is what they're looking for help with. At the same time, you can see there's lots of other things that have to be done to the center and will be done. So, the overall investment in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see, is much larger than the amount that would be asked to be reimbursed, it's 13% reimbursement to total expenditures. That's the CID. The second part of the incentives is the sales tax exemption, you've seen this image many a time, this shows what the expected savings would be for the project, that's the $71,000, and then how much would be apportioned to the City of Lee's Summit through its sales and use tax, that's the $16,000, which means Lee's Summit would be carrying approximately 22% of that overall reduction in project costs for the developer. So, in conclusion, we're here tonight to ask for your feedback on this request for a Community Improvement District and the LCRA for transformation of this neighborhood shopping center. While nothing about this project is gonna create some sort of financial home run for the developer, the incentives will make it viable. It will make it happen, and they would like to start it later this year, if successful, in moving this forward. We and they are confident it will absolutely create community value. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and after Mr. Bushak, I'm here for whatever questions you might have.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, David Bushak, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I will be presenting for the city. Some of this is a bit of a repeat of what you just heard in the presentation from the applicant, because that was very thorough. So, some of the graphics that you'll see, you're very familiar with at this point. The first slide that I have for you is just the simple one-page summary of what the incentive requests are, so you're clear on that. CID, one cent sales tax being imposed by the CID, reimburse the developer for about 1.45 million in project costs, and that's about 13.5% of the total project costs, which is this $10.8 million number at the bottom. And then the LCRA, sales, the request there is to use the sales and use tax exemption on construction materials, and that's a relatively modest benefit to the developer in comparison to the total project cost, it's less than 1%. So, the entire incentive package is about 14.2% of the total project cost, which is at the lower end of equivalent projects, which I'll show you in just a moment. This is also a repeat of the map that you just saw in their presentation. This is a map that was attached to an ordinance that the City Council approved in June of 2014, that established this Highway 50-291 urban renewal area, and I also have included blue arrow pointing to the project. And when these sort of projects come forward, when city staff reviews these projects, we're operating under the assumption that because this is still a valid action by the City Council, we're, we're operating under the presumption that the City Council still prefers to use this tool in this area, and that's how we've proceeded in the past. You certainly have full legislative discretion when the actual public hearing and the application comes before you, but this is included in the LCRA area that the City Council has already approved in the past, and declared all of this property to be blighted. This table is a summary of our redevelopment CID's. The city's approved Community Improvement Districts in a number of different contexts, some for new shopping centers such as Streets of West Prior and Summit Fair, but these are just our redevelopment, Community Improvement Districts. All of these are fairly comparable to the project that's being proposed to you, except for maybe the second one. The second one, that's redevelopment of the area that previously housed the Bank of the West, that's sort of nestled on the west side up against Highway 50 in the summit, near the Summit Fair area, and now contains a restaurant and a medical office building. So, this item, this, this reimbursement item only paid for the demolition cost to bring it back down to a green state. But the remainder of these projects, Pine Tree Plaza, the Southside Plaza, Cedar Creek, Chapel Ridge, and Valley Vista are, are comparable to this project, those were all age shopping center redevelopment Community Improvement Districts. So, this is a good data set that we've now developed. The maximum term of years for all these CID's are at least 20, and then the request tonight, 27 years, that's, that's the maximum that's allowed by the CID Act today. And then you'll see this, the reimbursable cost and the percentage of reimbursement is, is comparable to what we've seen in the past. And as of August of last year, the City Council approved a, a new revision, a revised version... And as of August of last year, the city council approved a, a new revision, a revised version of the economic, economic development incentive policy. And one of the statements, it's actually the very first statement, general policy statements in the policy is dealing with the reimbursement ratio, and that guideline says most favorable consideration will be given to projects that fall within the reimbursement ratio that has historically been approved by the city council for the requested type of incentive. So when we're analyzing this number, and like I said, we now have a, a good data set, probably the best of any city in Missouri for the use of this tool for this particular purpose, and you'll see that this reimbursement ratio here is, is well within the range and actually at the lower end of the range, and of all the age shopping center rehabilitation CID's, it's the lowest one. The only one, the only redevelopment CID that's lower is the one that I pointed out, which is really just to pay for demolition costs. So, so this is equivalent to the other projects here, and it's at the, the lowest end of the reimbursement ratio, which is in keeping with that, that first guideline in the revised incentive policy. And then the final slide I have for you, this is a very specific data set. This is the sales and use tax exemption that has been approved by the city council through the land clearance for redevelopment authority tool. And so unlike the previous slide that I showed you, this is a variety of different types of projects, not just shopping center redevelopment. So you've got an apartment complex, a senior care facility, Cedar Creek Shopping Center is one example, Vanguard Villas, which was the new townhomes over the undermined area, an industrial project, the downtown project, Ellis Glen, Colburn Ridge Project, which is just getting underway, and then the Reinhardt Food Service that was, that was very recent, had the groundbreaking a couple months ago. These are all examples of where the city is, the city council has approved the use of the L C R A and specifically the sales and use tax exemption. And, and again, then we have this project at the bottom of this list, and you'll see it's at the very lower end of the reimbursement ratio, which matches up with what I just said to you, a comparison of the CID to the other projects, and this is a comparison of this request to the other examples of where the council has approved sales and use tax exemption for, through the L C R A tool. That concludes my presentation and everything that I wanted to touch base on and be happy to answer your questions.
All right, thank you. Questions for applicant or staff? Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't know that I necessarily have any questions, but can I go ahead and give my opinion? Or wait?
Well, let's get some questions out first.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll come right back to you.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Yep, Councilmember Hodges?
Yes, so I hope that these are okay to ask. So I love the fact that they're wanting to update this because it's in my district and it's kind of an eyesore really. But to that end, my thought was just, could the, I don't know if the owner could re, maybe rethink some of the tenants that maybe don't fit what you were describing as the family neighborhood vibe that you were describing. I'm just thinking, you know, if we're gonna help incentivize this new look that's supposed to be nicer for our neighborhood, blah, blah, but yet we're still gonna have some of those tenants that are not necessarily fitting that look, so to speak. And then another thing, as far as the looks, there are some tenants there currently that are, they, they have some like photo screening in the windows, and it's just real distracting, and I don't, I, I was just curious if maybe they would upgrade their covenants to, to maybe say that stuff's not allowed once this improvement is done, just to keep a classier look. I just, that was just a few of my questions and thoughts are just for the owner, but...
Can you, can you address those, Mr. Peterson, to a degree?
Mr. Elam's coming this way to... I was paying attention, we were doing eye contact. So rather than I, and you're being polite too, which I appreciate, we're not talking about specific tenants in, in front of everyone, but that's also something that is, casual conversations can happen too. So the, this center was recently purchased, so none of these tenants have been placed here by this owner. So over time, things can, things can evolve and change. Obviously, it happens when leases are up. So if there's any informal comments, you know, that, that's fine, I mean, public too, right? So if those want to be shared at some point. In terms of screening windows, I'll, I'll get back to you, or I'll, I know, again, Katie's listening, and so we can look at, all I know is they're not putting several million dollars into the look of the center to have it not look great. So we've never, we never, we haven't ever fixated on that detail, but it's understood.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's Mayor.
Mr. Strealem, were you gonna answer that question? Can, can I just add on to that question? On screening, when she mentioned screening, she's referring to the backdrop of a window, and there's a lot of windows. And I've noticed around town that there are some shops that they'll like store stuff at the front of their, their, their shop, yeah. And it's like, why are they doing that? And how is that, I mean, it's, it's not a good look, but is there a way we can control those types of things? I'll even say this, that one of the storage units we, indoor storage units that we approved many years ago, I thought we did a pretty good job on it, but they're storing stuff inside the windows, and it's like, we don't want to see your storage in the window, you know, that type of thing. So can you help us with that?
Yeah, currently, we do not have a, a regulation for signs, let's say, on the inside of, of a building. I know that our planning staff has been looking at, at sign ordinance in particular, and I've asked them specific questions as well, such as, you know, is there a way to have an ordinance where, you know, within the first foot of the window inside, you have to keep that space clear or something, or, for example?
That would actually help. Because you wouldn't be able to see the, the things pressed up against the window.
I, I don't believe that we have finalized any of that at this point, and I know, I know that that is part of kind of a complete relook at our signage package overall. And Mr. Johnson is on Zoom, and he may be able to jump in with the additional details specifically related to this particular application. Through the implementation process, you know, we can have discussions with the developer and work through the cooperative agreement, some of those contractual items, at least for the term of the incentive, potentially.
Yeah, it's a big center, and it does provide a lot of small spaces. We just, if we're gonna do this, we want to do it right, I think is the... Mr. Johnson, did you want to chime in?
Well, um... Not a lot to add, Mr. Elam's correct, you are allowed to do that, and it's something we need to look at with an overhaul of our sign code. And right now, the only things we're looking at redoing in the sign code are temporary signage, so that's something we'll have to look at in a, what I want to say, in a more holistic manner of the overall sign code, and we just don't have that on the, on the to-do, not to-do list, on our priority list right now with the CID C.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges, are you good? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lovell?
Thank you, Mayor. So I like this. I think this is a, a great opportunity to take what I would consider kind of a blighted area and uplift it. Couple of things I was thinking of, kind of piggybacks off of what Councilmember Hodges was saying. I know like when we did Pine Tree Plaza, now it was a totally different animal, I think it was, I don't even know what vacancy it was because there was really no tenants in there. We did have some parameters as the uses that could be used in there. Now, I wouldn't want to do anything to hurt or hinder the purchaser because they're buying those things based on lease agreements that they have in place, but I don't, I do know there are opportunities for us when we do this, like, hey, if this left, here are some approved uses moving forward. Is there something like that that we could do, like, not pushing anyone out, but if there was, like, here are the approved uses, like, I know we've done that in the past.
Yeah, so just a few differences between Pine Tree Plaza and this one particularly. The, the restriction on uses were, was put into place through a zoning overlay, through the Invision LS zoning overlay that was there. Now, through the negotiations, I'm assuming through the cooperative agreement, again, term of the incentive, we have a little bit more flexibility with what we can and cannot kind of request and negotiate for during that period. If there was a desire to put some sort of an overlay on the area, that would be kind of a different process, so. But throughout, throughout the term of the incentive, I think we can handle that within...
Be like grandfather, what's in there now, and then like moving forward, like, here are some things that, I don't know, just, just a thought, I'm not trying to add a layer of difficulty to this, but...
Yeah, so I can add a little bit more discussion to that. I'm thinking back to the TIF contract for Summit Woods, so this is what we negotiated back in like 1999 and 2000, and that TIF contract had an approved tenant list. So the way it started was, this, I'm sort of summarizing negotiations, we said to the developer, give us a list of all the tenants that you might include in the shopping center, they did that, that became an attachment to the TIF contract. And the contract said, if you want any other tenant that's not on this pre-approved tenant list, you're gonna have to come and get city approval. That's the technique that was used for Summit Woods. Developer didn't like that, and so when we got to Summit Fair, we switched over to a prohibited, prohibited tenant list. So instead of a pre-approved list of specific tenants by name, it became a list of prohibited tenants, like automotive-type uses and oil changes and things like that. A long list of prohibited uses, that was less burdensome for the developer. Of course, anytime you're going down that path, whether it's a pre-approved tenant list or a restricted use list, that becomes more difficult for the developer to implement because it's more restrictive. Better for the city because we have more control, developer doesn't like that as much, so you have to balance that issue. But the point is, we do have some precedent for using those type of tools in the past. We haven't used those for CID's and, and rehab shopping center CID's, but if that's the council's direction, we could do that.
Well, it's, again, certainly not wanting to do to, do anything to harm their finances with restrictions or anything like, but a good opportunity, especially on a major corridor like that, if we wanted to try and work with them to come up with something that was amenable to, to both parties. The, like, and I don't know, like, so I was just thinking of the, the payback, so it's a 1% CID overlay on the sales tax, you know, what it's generating in sales tax now, you know, like, how long we think, would it take the full 27 years? Is it possible that it would be sooner than that?
So I, I think I can answer that question, and then I'll look back to Mr. Peterson if he wants to sort of correct me or fill in the blanks, but I think their reimbursement schedule is based on the net present value calculation of what the CID would generate over the full 27-year period, so that's how they scale their reimbursement. So if the center is, if the, if the sales accelerate above and beyond what the projection is, then it could pay off earlier than 27 years. Now I'll look back and see if, that's, that's a fair summary of what the request is.
You know, I, I think also, and I think this is the intention, I'll just verify it, is that, you know, by doing this, getting these incentives, we're also kind of protecting the rent, rent rates, you know, so that we're not having to go in and raise rent rates significantly like Mr. Peterson was saying, so I think this is kind of insulating some of that, encouraging what I would say, local owners, operators, neighborhood-type, you know, businesses to still be able to play ball in our community, so to speak.
Right, I think, and I, I've, I've had this...
Not trying to put any rent control or anything like that on it, just verifying that, that that's part of this, you know, intent with this incentive.
Right, and, and I think, as we've discussed, on a few occasions when we've gone deeper into that point of discussion, what we have with these shopping centers is long-term leases have been signed, rents are established, the developer wants to rehab the shopping center but doesn't have the ability to raise the rents and pull more revenue in to put back into the center. So one of the solutions is the extra sales tax, which generates this reimbursement source, and the rents stay the same, and then they can re-tenant and every, you know, that all raises all boats in the shopping center.
I think that is a, a great use. And then the only other thing I was gonna say, and this is getting a little, you know, it's, it's more subjective, and I know this is just conceptual, but one of the things you hear me say a lot is just kind of design and elements that we're using there. Not trying to be too burdensome with what we do, but I don't know if there would be opportunities, and I think maybe this is a bigger conversation that we might all start exploring on council, is being more clear in intent with the types of materials and things that we want to see with some of this redevelopment, so then the developer can come in and be like, hey, this is kind of the look and feel that they're going for. Not that I dislike what's there, just saying like, you know, how are we making sure that what we do to these improvements, number one, stays within the budget? Or if it, if it was going more and we felt like it was a better look or feel, that we might even be amenable to more incentives to do that or offset that. I guess my thing to the developer would be whether there's other options to soften it or op, opportunities to kind of see different renderings that, you know, make this thing viable 10, 15 years from now, right? And again, not saying that the design that's before us, I know it's conceptual, isn't, but just know that we, I think, you know, from my perspective, I'm looking for beauty as, as much as you can do without obviously overdoing it.
So on that very point, we, we've heard your comments, I mean, yours specifically and the council's generally, on, on that point with previous discussions regarding this type of incentive, and in particular, when we went through the revisions to the incentive policy back in August. And so one of the things that we plan to do for this cooperative agreement that we haven't done before, for, for this type of cooperative agreement, shopping center rehabilit- rehabilitated shopping center CID, is to use permit-level plans or more detailed plans as an attachment to the cooperative agreement. We haven't done that before, we've had some preliminary discussions with the applicant, they're agreeable in concept to moving in that direction, and like I said, it's the same as the, as the tenant restriction issue, which is the more restrictions and the more tied down the developer comes, the less they like that, but we like that better. So we're gonna try to achieve a fair balance, but the type of, the type of detail you see with elevations on preliminary development plans, for example, that's what we plan to attach to the cooperative agreement, which you will eventually approve. So that issue will come back to you again.
I think that's it. Great, appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Busek. Couple, just, some of these are basic questions, maybe like refreshers, about, about permissible uses for a CID, what can be reimbursed? You know, what we've listed here, landscaping, the veneer, if you will, or the exterior, there, there a, this that, that you refer to when you're looking at this, thank you, the different kind, kinds of redevelopment projects or costs that can be reimbursed with a CID, and what would not be? For instance, what on this list would not be permitted to be reimbursed?
So there's, there's basically two categories of costs that a CID can fund. One is public improvements, and the second is demolition and rehabilitation costs, rehabilitation, refurbishment of existing structures. So the legal limitation is, you can basically take an existing structure and bring it all the way down to the foundation and reconstruct it, and those are all eligible costs. So for example, this is not the request here, but if they were to, in concept, take a shopping center, reduce it to its foundation and completely rebuild it, everything associated with that rebuild would be eligible costs. So the legal, within the legal parameters, just about anything associated with rehabilitation of the shopping center or the buildings, the parking lot, any, any sort of man-made structures or landscaping, those are all eligible costs once you make the blight finding, which the city council did back in 2014. So everything under the redevelopment project costs here are eligible costs based on that legal analysis. And then the developer's only requesting these specific items to be reimbursable in this case.
Those things that would be below soft cost financing, et cetera, are not obviously, just by way of how you described it, would not be reimbursed?
So there are certain types of soft costs that are associated with this package of costs that are also reimbursable. They haven't, again, they have not requested that any of those soft costs be reimbursed, and so the cooperative agreement would limit them just to these specific amounts and this maximum amount, but there are certain categories of soft costs that are also reimbursable along the lines of costs of formation of the district, legal fees, accounting fees to run the district, those sort of administrative and soft costs are eligible too.
There could be more if they wished to incorporate that fall outside of the redevelopment project cost category.
Correct, as long as, as long as it's in furtherance of the redevelopment and the blight clearance effort.
Also said, public infrastructure.
Correct, and then any public infrastructure is, is valid use of CID revenue.
And just, when we as a council look at different matters for approval, we often have a different element of discretion we can exercise. This one is very discretionary, meaning a CID, unlike other applications where we may have some restrictions on how we can, wholly discretionary, is that accurate?
I think that's a fair statement. I think you're more constrained with zoning-type decisions, for example, and there's a, there's a much, there's a large body of case law that governs that, a very separate sort of analysis, but here you have a wide degree of discretion for this type of request.
And you already, I think, answered part of my question, I think, with Councilmember Lovell, who asked about the CID being paid back, and its potential for it to be paid back at a faster rate.
Right.
Or it could go the entire length and not be paid back entirely.
That's, that's also true. So basically, once they reach this number, plus the interest that's allowed by the cooperative agreement, the CID would stop reimbursing the developer.
And who's, how is that accounted for? Meaning, ID has a governing structure, assume, and they have, you said, the accounting has to be taken care of.
Right.
Track that and would, hey, we've hit the meter, the top of the meter, and make sure we now cut that piece off and then inform all the... Track that and would, hey, we've hit the meter, the top of the meter, and make sure we now cut that piece off and then inform all the retailers.
Right.
Collection of sales tax.
Yeah. So it's basically a cooperative arrangement between the district itself as a political subdivision of the state and then city staff. The way our cooperative agreements work and the way it would work in this case is, the CID, once it's formed, it's a separate political subdivision of the state, kind of like a mini-city, but has very, very limited purposes. It has its own legislative body. It holds annual meetings. It adopts its own budget. There's a cooperative agreement with the city where the sales tax revenues are collected at the cash register. They flow to the Department of Revenue. Department of Revenue will deposit those in an account controlled by the city. And then our city finance department administers those sales tax revenues. So when the developer does the rehabilitation work, they submit requests for reimbursement. They request to certify those reimbursable project costs. The city reviews those to make sure it matches this list that you're looking at here, stamps them approved. And then those start accruing interest until they're reimbursed. And the city tracks the dollars in and the dollars out to reimburse the CID. And when we reach the finish line, the city says, we're done and we unwind the CID. There's a lot more details to those steps, but that's a sort of concise summary of how it works.
I'm just thinking about how processes sometimes work. And if I'm a citizen going and paying my, that extra one percent sales tax, it's not as if it's an automatic shut-off. I guess part of what I'm wondering is, what happens if someone falls asleep at the wheel and sales tax doesn't get? What remedies are there? Because if I'm the person who bought the widget at such and such store, I'm probably not going to get reimbursed my one percent. Tell me how that is dealt with.
Yeah. So a good question. I think it would be very hard to miss that for any type of district like this because between the districts and its own functioning and then the city staff, like I said, tracking the dollars in every month and dollars out to reimburse the developer, there's a pretty good control mechanism on that. In the life cycle of all the CID's and transportation development districts that have been approved in the city, only a handful have been turned off. But when you reach that point, there's a lot of focus on that, and there's a lot of buildup to that point. So I'm thinking of the Struther Road Transportation Development District, the original Summit Woods Transportation Development District, two examples of where those districts were turned off at the appropriate time. And because it's a very forward-looking process, meaning we know we're going to reach that process in six to twelve months, depending on the flow of revenues over a period of months, you start planning for that about twelve months out. So I would say, based on the systems that are in place through our finance department, it would be virtually impossible to miss that point.
I think that's good to know from a taxpayer perspective, just because knowing that there's a series of processes in place to kind of make sure. Okay. Mr. Peterson, actually, thank you, Mr. Bushak. Mr. Peterson, if I could ask a few questions. One was just, from my own understanding, the projections that were used, that annual growth of two percent. Is that a conservative estimate? Or is that kind of what, do you know enough about, does your client know enough about this, the shopping center now that it grows like that now? Or is this, we adopted two percent? Perhaps being reworked over time?
So start with the baseline. Baseline was generally current sales. And then an expectation over the next several years to tenant the vacant spaces. And then after that, just to give context to this, how do you grow that over time? And frankly, there's people in the room, financial people, that know in Lee Summit generally, and it's been, I'm positive, I don't know Lee Summit off the top of my head. I know some cities. It's not like it's like exactly the same. We've seen, especially with more online retail and all that, but I just have the confidence. I can't frankly remember what conversation over the last six months led to the two percent with the client. But if you had asked me what to use, I would say that you wouldn't be crazy to put in three percent. And you wouldn't be crazy to put in one and a half percent and two percent. No one can really argue with two percent. So I know we talked about it. I just don't remember much more about that conversation.
And however that growth goes, again, kind of going to the question we've been talking about earlier, if it grows. Falls off faster, meaning-
And if it doesn't, the financial bargain, that their expectation, I should say, the developer doesn't get quite what they hope for.
Then, excuse me, so thinking about this conversation about quality, I actually am thinking, you know, this, yes, all the development efforts here, I think would be great to improve the facility. But I also start thinking about these shopping centers and has they. Integrity of the buildings themselves. Has your client looked at that with this structure? Is there any concern or issues there that they are aware of or are going to be looking at to where this might change? Or they may be looking in the future as something they want to deal with in the future? Again, the, not infrastructure from the public perspective, but the building infrastructure, what the quality might be over time.
So I know that baseline, by definition, you kind of, like, explained it in the opening, their business model. They buy and they hold and they take care of it, and that's their model. And I know that, getting to know this client, it's the first time I've gotten to work with this developer. I know that, like most developers, but I definitely know with them, that there's a whole diligence process when they buy and they look at the asset. So I know that the useful life is more, it's not like the useful life is ten or fifteen or twenty years. They know that the useful life falls within this window. So I know they're confident that this is a good investment for them for the long term. Whether this center goes fifty more years or something like that, I look at all of you and say, I don't think anybody really knows. But I can give you confidence about, yes, this useful life fits within the window of time we're talking about.
You made a comment earlier about the impact of other CID's. And so, take you at your word, but I'm, so I'm going to ask you now to verify. You talked about improving other neighborhoods. Can you flush that out a little bit? I live close to Cedar Creek, and I think you might have done, been a, which looks nice.
Being at that pizza place, that's really good.
Not, but I almost did the other night.
The patio on the back. I'm serious. This is the kind of stuff we were talking about that's come out of that. It's incredible.
So can you just elaborate a little bit on that, the, this idea that it's impacted the neighboring communities?
Absolutely. I will keep it short because this crosses in, I get passionate about my role and my job, what I get to do every day. I have seen, and it's not the same for every shopping center in every neighborhood, but I'll pick out one. It's just the first one that came to my mind. It doesn't mean it's better than the rest, right? But I'm thinking of, if some of you have visited Prairie Village, and you can think of, think of Eighty-third and Mission, which is the Corinth Shopping Center. Did a CID, it was right after the act was passed in Kansas. Missouri CID, we've had a lot longer. And went in and all it was, you know, was a project that could be assisted with a one percent CID sales tax, just like this. To do what? To work on the parking lot and the lighting and the landscaping and the facades. I mean, very much like this. And the same goes, we did at the same time, the Prairie Village Shopping Center, which is, what is that, Seventy-first and Mission? So just down to the same time. It is unbelievable to see what's happened to property values and people reinvesting. And it's not just me. This comes from anecdotal friends, people at church, whatever, that live in those areas. And they point to the fact that those centers, rebirthing themselves, caused that. Now, again, will every center of that happen in the same magnitude? Those are pretty large centers. No. But I know that this concept of people seeing in their vicinity and where they go regularly, reinvestment and, you know, just aesthetics, right, and function, when those improve, it tends to have an impact. So I don't want to overstate it, but I know it's real.
And I'll just, again, not to overstate what we've, what's already been said here, but a focus on quality. And obviously going to be some dialogue with staff based on what was said earlier about permit permitting. Definitely interested in quality work, so. Mr. Bushak, just one more question on that permit element. The idea is, at least correctly, that before a permit would be given, there are certain requirements that would have to be met by the developer. You're talking about, in your conversation with councilmember Level about quality of development, can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah. So even more than that, the working concept, and I've done this in another city and with these types of shopping center CID projects in other cities, is to attach to the cooperative agreement a set of plans, fairly detailed plans, at least to the level of what you see with a preliminary development plan with elevation in building materials, maybe even a step beyond that. And they need to match, they need to build to those plans. And the most restrictive version of the cooperative agreement provision is, they don't receive any reimbursement until they complete according to those plans. So it's what you just said, but a step further.
If I could add just two things. Some of the work being proposed here wouldn't require a permit in our current system. Resurfacing a parking lot, relighting that, even the facade work typically would not require a permit. And so this, the way that we are kind of addressing that, based off of the feedback that we have heard, is by including those requirements in that contract document, in that cooperative agreement.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. You, Mr. Bushak, you showed us a couple of charts of comparable projects and the level of incentive and that kind of thing. The sales tax exemption, was that used on very many of the other similar shopping center projects? I didn't see, it looked like maybe only one or two on that, that list. Is that a typical request for this kind of a project?
I would say, no, it's not. And so to look back at this list, that was used for Cedar Creek. And Chapel, no, not Chapel Ridge. I think just Cedar Creek, Cedar Creek. Yeah.
And then with the talk about possible use restrictions, and it's been said that those could be for the term of the incentive, would that be for the full twenty-seven years or until it dropped off if that was earlier?
Both, really. So the idea is, under the cooperative agreement, when the developer's fully reimbursed, the CID turns off, the cooperative agreement terminates, you go through the wind-up process once developer's fully reimbursed. So that could be either, it would be the earlier of twenty-seven years or when the developer's fully reimbursed. And so that use restriction, or whatever the restriction is under the contract, would apply until the contract terminates.
So it could be a shorter term than the twenty-seven years?
Correct.
Good to know. Typically, I don't like to see a ton of restrictions on how people use their property, but if they're looking for public incentives, I'm definitely open to that. All over a project, so what my other council members said, I'd be open to that. I guess I would shy away from the sales tax exemption if we haven't done that on other projects for a couple of reasons. One, the CID, how I see it is, that's kind of, it's almost like an assessment on those properties, that it's just being paid by people who are utilizing that shopping center for that shopping center going into that area. It accomplishes a similar thing by just having an assessment on all the properties, but okay, this is a fine way to structure that. But the sales tax, that's taking money directly out of the city's pocket. I know it's not a huge amount, but I guess I just don't, I don't. Good reason to have that as well. I get the CID, but less of the sales tax. So that's kind of where I fall in this, but it would be great to see that shopping center revitalized. I could certainly use it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just because I know this is healthy dialogue, because otherwise, we look for feedback and then we go off and staff does their job and negotiates with us, so we listen very carefully, for instance, to councilwoman Shields's comments. We didn't all talk about it, and I didn't mention anything about it, so if you don't mind, a tiny bit of possible dialogue on it. While I can't, I'm not positive on every single one of those, I know some of those are not within an LCRA. And the sales tax exemption certificate is made available specifically through the LCRA tool because of the idea of an overall blight finding from LCRA. That was that big map, right, that we put up there at the beginning? So at least a policy point to maybe get some more feedback, if you want to talk about it or if anybody else wants to talk about it. I, my perception is, LCRA, by defining the, you know, very narrow boundaries of where the LCRA tool is going to be used, was focused on projects like this. And a lot of times, it wasn't even available, and so it certainly wasn't asked for. And so I would hope that, even though it's not a massive amount of money, back to my analogy of singles here, I mean it, like seventy-five thousand dollars-ish, right, the estimate really does matter to the client here in doing this. So while I totally respect you and when you make comments like that, I would just throw out that additional fact that this is LCRA, and that's why a previous council did create the LCR boundaries so that developers could ask you to avail ourselves of that specific benefit of sales tax exemption. So, but I do appreciate and understand your comments.
Yes, please.
I understand, and I understand why a developer would ask for it. I mean, you know, if you don't ask, you can't get. But I still, I think, stand by what I said, and I look at the budget that's been presented. And I know that these numbers aren't not just thrown out there, but I do see like, you know, a contingency of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Like, there's some room in this budget. It's not, you know. I understand why it's being asked for, and I'm respectful of whatever other comments we have from the council, but that's kind of where I fall in that particular one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So when a CID, like, if it were to be approved, are there ever any cases where sales drop off because of the CID? Only because I would hate to see anything happen to that Italian restaurant, because that's one of our only Italian restaurants here.
So I've, I don't have any hard evidence of this, but I've worked on a lot of projects in a lot of cities. And I've had that exact discussion with lots of people. And I've even talked to people who actually pay close attention to where these extra sales taxes are in various cities and does it affect their shopping habits. The only thing that I would, I think, might be affected when you have an extra one cent sales tax in an area is purchases of large quantities of things like lumber for a project. I have no evidence that an extra one cent sales tax has any impact at all on the shopping habits of day-to-day retail, restaurant, anything except very large purchases like maybe, you know, a piece of equipment or a large shipment of lumber to a location. That's the only time I've ever really seen any evidence that it has any impact.
Okay, thank you. I know, me personally, I don't necessarily pay attention to that when I'm shopping, but I didn't know. You ready for my opinion yet or no?
Yeah, please.
Okay. I like this. I think, I think that shopping center has been needing to get redone for a long time because, and especially with the new two ninety-one interchange going to get redone soon, that's going to be even, more people are going to travel that intersection, and it's going to be a main corridor. It is a main corridor into our city. So I think, I like it. I do feel like, I agree with councilmember Hodges, I think it's so important to have, and I go to Corinth Square a lot. We like that Italian restaurant that's there. My family does. So I've seen the transformation there. Did you say that's the same owner? Or no? That's, no. But yeah, so I know that the one percent CID can really make a difference. And so I really like this, but I would like to see good quality, even if they're locally owned stores, just good quality restaurants and stores in there, just because it is a main corridor. So I would be in support of the restrictions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. I think most of my questions have been asked as well. Comment, maybe more so, Mr. Peterson, about the parking. I've visited this center for many times throughout the years, so very familiar with the property. I don't recall there ever being a parking issue there. So I'm just curious, is the current or the new owner considering any kind of pad sales, out parcels being sold?
I've mentioned several times, this has gone on for, I want to say, it's about six months. And so I get copied on emails and I see the design team and I watch this, that's never come up. I would be shocked. It's also interesting, since you've been there, if you visualize, and we can pull it up too, visualize it in your mind. It's pretty flat, right? What I mean, that wasn't descriptive enough. It's narrow. It's long and slender. And so when you and I think of, trying to, again, think of somebody who's padded out somewhere, think of Ranch Mart in Leewood, right there, there's, they put some pads right out and they had a room, right? I just unofficially, I'm saying, one, I've never heard them bring that up, which is a sign no. And two, I don't know that you could fit that.
Right. It wouldn't seem like it.
Pretty narrow, yeah.
It wouldn't seem like it would. I was just curious because we don't want to create parking problems, I guess, so, and that's what that would cause. So then, yeah, just, that's the only real question I had. As far as how I feel about the concept and what's being proposed, I think I'm in favor of what's being proposed. Mainly because it falls within our plan for the area. It's a long, again, I say this often when these kind of projects come before- It, it's, it's a long, again, I, I say this often when these kind of projects come before us, and I think I've been involved with all of these that are on the screen right now, since I've been, since I've served on council. My big thing is, and as a council, staying consistent, as the mayor says a lot, or says often, this is along a major thoroughfare. And so this is important, especially with what's going on just south of there, at 50 Highway and 291, at the interchange. We're investing quite a bit, just right down the street from there. So this falls in line with that. And, and it's within the ratio of what, as, what's on the screen, again, of what we've approved for similar type shopping centers. So for those reasons, I would be supportive. I, I see the concern about the LCRA, not, not to address another council person directly. But at the same time, there's a reason why these LCRA districts and areas were created, the plans. And if it's an incentive that's available and it's being requested, I think, I'd be okay with what's being asked. So, just my opinion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I'm not seeing anybody else wanting to speak, so I'll just make a few comments. Gosh, you guys were thorough tonight with all your questions. Yeah, it has, we, we saved up. I'm trying to think of more questions or more clarifications, and I would just say, the, yeah, that parking lot, it'd be nice to get that parking lot done, and it's kind of a mess. And the, the look, I, I understand what, what council members were talking about with regard to wanting quality in the look. I liked the look of the, of the conceptials, they were, I liked the brick and the stone, whatever it was, stone paver, I think, and the contrast. So I do, I did like what I, what I saw. But of course, I love the ideas of attaching the conceptials to the people. Cooperative agreement, yep. I like that. When it comes to restricting, I'm not big on that either, but I like the sound of that better than telling them what can go there. So I would rather say this is what can't go there. Because then the, the business, the owner, the developer can, and it's, it's easier for them to say, okay, yeah, I don't want that either, and eliminate that. So I would, I'd be okay with that, I'm not big into that, but I, I definitely could be okay with it if that, if that was the approach we took, rather than trying to create a list of what's okay to go there. And then, yeah, it's a corridor, so I like doing the, I like it whenever people reinvest in these shopping centers. I do like the neighborhood shopping centers, the neighborhood feel. So I'm always excited when I see one of these come through, as long as it's reasonable, and this seems pretty reasonable, within the things we've done in the past. So fixing up a really big shopping center, 55,000 square feet. And it's vital because it offers all kinds of different sizes of spaces. So that's, that's really nice, too. So I think you mostly heard positive feedback tonight. So I'm guessing that means you'll be coming back through. Do you have any, anything else you want to chime in with, Mr. Peterson? Bushak, Mr. Ehlum, Mr. Dunning? All right, very good. Thank you all. Would you all like to continue? Would you like to break? All right. I don't know who is supposed to be reading what. Oh, wait, I do have one. Yes, we have resolutions. So we have the city clerk that's going to please read us resolution regarding general obligation bonds.
Resolution number 24-01, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds for the benefit of the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. This is regarding putting some of our dollars to work on all these infrastructure type of items. So any, I have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Redson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That resolution does pass unanimously. Thank you. And then Ms. Fowler-Aurcuri, would you please read resolution number 24-02?
Resolution number 24-02, a resolution expressing the opposition of the council of the City of Lee Summit, Missouri to the location of a landfill or other facility involved in solid waste hauling near the city's border.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt by Councilmember DeMora, we have a second by Councilmember Edson, but we also have some updates with regard to things that are going on in Jeff City. Mr. Head, can you help me with this part? Just to give more of a general summary, and then you can dive into the details. You know, we, we did get this passed last year at the House level, but we didn't get it through the Senate. And kept the pressure on. We've met with all of our representatives, senators, to ask for help. We've met with our, met with our sister cities, their mayors, and their city managers, and many, many more. And a lot of plotting has been going on as to what's the best approach to take at the state level. And we have new sponsors for the bills in the House and the Senate. And sometimes that makes a difference, but most importantly, is getting on the floor for a vote. Because last year, we did not get on the floor, we never got a vote on the Senate. And it did get, like I said, we finally got a vote, but it was really close on the House side as to whether we're getting a vote. We are getting it on the floor right away this year, hopefully, because it's already in committee, and that's where Mr. Head, I was hoping you'd help me out with the specifics. This resolution does not, why don't you explain how this does not specifically cite a bill? But there are bills that are being put forward at this time.
Mayor, there are any number of bills. Currently, the one that seems to be moving, Air Poise Bill, it's Senate Bill 739. Hopefully, it's going to come up for a hearing soon. We don't know when that's going to be just yet, but it is, has been, already been signed to a committee, and hopefully, that can be, that will get to the floor. That bill is a very similar repeat to what we had last year, related to changing that distance from a half mile to a mile. You know, a, a city within a half mile is given the ability to hold a public hearing that has significant input then into the citing of that type of facility, currently in Missouri law, and the desire was last year to move that to a mile. So that bill generally does that, once again. There are, there are several bills out there, but that one in particular seems to be moving the most quickly. Oh, I will, as the mayor indicated, some of our, I think, Raymore and the Lee Summit School District also have passed resolutions, but they are, they cited specific bills. They didn't really want to cite specific bills, because as we know, things can get amended on here or there, and am I supporting the right bill or not right bill? And so we felt it was better to keep it general. So it does say that we are opposed to location of a landfill or a solid waste hauling facility, in case there was some desire to change the, you know, the footprint or the look of this, or the purpose, to something maybe less than a landfill, but still a large hauling facility. We still felt that we should have some say in that citing, and we would be opposed to that. So we did add a little bit of language. But just because everything is so fluid in Jefferson City, we didn't feel like sort of locking ourselves into individual House bills or Senate bills.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up for questions, we'll go from there. So why don't you start us off, Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Head. So just for our understanding and the public's as well, what's the logistical steps? So we, we pass the resolution, and then if that, once it's done, and how do we plan to present it or share it?
Well, that resolution would give the mayor or other representatives of the council the ability to go and testify at hearings. Specifically, we know that this is in front of the, I believe it's the local government, an elections committee. Generally, they meet on Mondays, but next Monday's a holiday, so we don't know when it's going to be. It would give that ability. Plus, it would also give our lobbyists something to kind of hold up and say, you know, my client is opposed to this. At this point, it would go to committee, there'd be a hearing. At some point, it would be hopefully voted out of committee, and then it would be up to the, the, the leadership of the House. In this case, I guess this is a Senate bill, it would start there. But there are, there are companion bills in both, both chambers, as you know how they do that. But it would, it would eventually get to the leadership to get taken to the floor at some point.
I'm gonna, I'm prepared to go.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, they, they've already asked me.
I would assume you would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I would.
They don't have a date or time yet.
I was gonna say, I hope that the lobbyist would be, this would be on their radar, and the idea was, our lobbyists would be informing us.
Actually, yeah, let me add on that. The lobbyist that we now use actually was the biggest help last year. Our lobbyist that we were using actually got this, yeah, got this lobbyist to meet me and, very good, introduced me to a lot of people.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Great.
I actually had communication just today with our lobbyist. There's a lot more communication between the two of us on, he's asking me about different, different things that are coming forward, and what, what we think about this or that. And he's also letting me know when these things are coming forward to hearing. He's not waiting to send an email, he's just calling me up and, and letting me know, and then I'm sharing that with the mayor and, and the committee. LIRC got some emails from me today.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I know a lot of constituents in my district, in this district, are really concerned about this, so I appreciate that we have it on the agenda. You kind of introduce us, saying that we're looking at a number of avenues, what's the best way to, to work on this, this resolution? I feel like when we talked about this before, last time we passed a similar resolution, it was sort of allowing us to direct staff to continue working on this issue. So the legislative route is one way, but if we see other ways, this kind of gives the city as a, as an entity a direction of this is,
Absolutely, yeah.
this is our position on this, and then take whatever, I'm not saying whatever measures, but, but to, in all our conversations, be keeping in mind that this is our, our North Star, trying to make sure that kind of.
Yes, very much so, because I can't, you know, if I'm talking with other mayors or other municipalities, or organizations, government, I, I need to have, or, you know, in some form. It's always best to have it from the dais. Yeah, Mr. Dunning, you want to help?
Yeah, I would add with, if, if the council adopts this resolution as well, that equips not only the council, but us as staff, to share with other, I'll say, community partners, right? The chamber can then weigh in on this, the Economic Development Council, other entities can take this and say, yep, we agree with where the city is. So in, in many ways, as, as our chief elected officials go about weighing in on this, then that provides, equips others to, to then weigh in behind as well. This feels right, rather than those entities, you know, weighing in on behalf of the city without us having weighed in on, that doesn't feel right. So this is kind of a big step right here.
And I'll just add one more thing to that, which is, like, some of our sister cities feel that this is the only way to get this stopped, is through the state. But we are still working on other conversations with other jurisdictions to, you know, to, to solve this, you know, as backup, backup plans. And to, to, you know, very positive type of things with regard to, you know, I mean, if this didn't happen, then eventually this goes to Kansas City. And they have, they would have to approve something. So we need to be building our relationships with Kansas City and setting up for, for the, that time down the road at all times, but especially with this. So it's not the only way, but man, this would make my, make our lives easier, all of our lives. And then we could still work on those other positive things, so.
And I, and I think continuing this push in the legislature makes a lot of sense, and I, but I hope this also gives the authority to you to staff.
Yes.
But whatever avenues that we can find, so thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Felker?
Thank you for another moment. I was, and you more or less said a little bit of this, but I was just gonna ask whether staff or Mayor Yu could say about anything that MARK, Mid-America Regional Council, if they're talking about this more, I mean, in terms of trying to engage something regionally.
Yeah, I'd, I'd defer to Mr. Dunning and Mayor Potem Lopez. I, I don't know that they really want to lead on this, no. So Mid-America Regional Council, we commonly refer to it as MARK, is what we call a regional planning organization, and they do have a solid waste aspect of their, the services they provide on that regional planning effort. I can tell you that there are efforts underway to look at our regional landfill needs. That's something we hear from the, the potential developer of this, this landfill is cer, there's a certain timeframe in which we're going to reach a, a point where our landfill needs aren't, aren't going to be met. So that's where our regional planning organization comes into play, and they, I'm, I'm aware of work that they are doing on landfill capacity for this region. So that's helpful work that's in motion that I'm aware of, that will hopefully be coming forward sometime soon, so that we have that collective data and knowledge from our regional planning organization.
As, as the liaison mayor, if I could, for, for our council.
Yes, please.
On the MARK board, yeah, as, as already, as has been stated, they're not taking the lead on, on this topic, this specific topic or a position. But I think what Mr. Dunning did say is very accurate. I think the fact that they are looking for other alternative by-state options for, for, for this, this, this issue. And it's, it's a bigger picture kind of approach. And the, this developer is aware of that. So that's, that's all they're doing.
I'll, I'll add one more thing, thank you. Just one more thing would be, the approach that we're taking with the state this time around feels right. Whereas last year, we were rushed. I think in some, to some, to some congressmen, and men and women, we looked emotional. And this time around, we have all our ducks in a row. We have it lined up with, like Senator Sir Poise respected, and it helps that he's bringing forth this bill, and it's early on, and the approach of taking it through the Senate first is considered the only path by most. Our lobbyists would say that, I think. So you gotta, that's why, that's why it's so important with the Senate side. I mean, we can get it through the House, but the Senate's the, the key. So I think we can get it through the House, but the Senate's the key. So everything feels much, and plus, we're aligned with Raymore, Grandview, and others with regard to terminology and, and the approach and such. So we got a lot of momentum this time. Don't you agree?
I do agree. I, to your point, Mayor, I think last year was a little bit more of a scramble, and we're well, much more prepared, aligned, not only with our, our representatives down at Jeff City, but here in the, in the region as well.
Right, all right. All right, any, any other discussion on that? Resolution does state that we support legislation that would allow for the City of Lee Summit and other governmental entities to have significant input in the location of a landfill or other facility involved in solid waste haul, hauling near our respective borders. And that we are in opposition to the location of any landfill or other facility involved in solid waste hauling outside the corporate city limits and near the borders of the city. So it's right at our front steps, and that's why this is so important. I'm not seeing any further discussion, so I'm gonna call for the vote. Would you please cast your vote? W S? I'm missing one. Is somebody log off? There we go, I got nine. That motion is adopted unanimously, so thank you all. And if anybody wants to go to Jeff City with me when, when that campaign comes up, you're more than welcome, so. We're gonna go to proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. I'm gonna have Councilmember Lovell read for Councilmember Edson, since she's online. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number 24-001?
Thanks, Mayor. I move to advance second reading bill number 24-001, ordinance establishing compensation allowances for the mayor, councilmembers, mayor pro tempore, and municipal judges with the city, with the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24 dash 001, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know this has already been through committee, but I actually wouldn't mind if I could ask Councilmember Shields to kind of comment on the process and what we're looking at, just for the benefit of our constituents.
So we discussed this in Finance and Budget Committee. Basically, the last time that the salaries for the mayor, councilmembers, and judges were adjusted was 2016. So just really to account for inflation since then, we've done some incremental adjustments to those. We looked at comparable communities, just to get an idea if we were really in line with what our, you know, comparator cities are doing. There was definitely some variation in the surrounding areas, but we were generally within line, so we decided not to try to make any major adjustments, just to do that kind of inflation accounting. This will take effect in 2026, so after two elections from now, so it can go into effect at the same time for all elected officials. So if anyone has any other questions, absolutely, but that we, that was kind of the thought process that we had in, in this.
Excellent. Councilmember Felker?
That's it. Just wanted to hear from Councilmember Shields. Thank you.
Councilmember Edson?
No, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Shields managed to answer my question in her response, and I appreciate her work and the committee's work on this, so thank you.
Thank you as well. I know this was something that council had been talking about for a little while, and I appreciate that, that Finance and Budget took it up and did the homework and, and more so. It's always hard to get people to run because of the commitment, and so every little thing can help. So this, as long as we're in the, you know, in the running and comparable, then we're in good shape.
Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, Councilmember Shields and I were just talking about this, but, and I think just for general public to know and understand that we're not giving ourselves raises is a key.
Yeah.
Or even prohibited from doing so based on the way the statute reads, so.
So the, the increase in salary can't take place for any elected official until after they've stood for election again. So it could go into effect for half of the council this year, but we elected to defer it two years, so it would take effect at the same time for everyone. They can throw us out if they're not happy.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, seeing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you all. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 24 da- oh, no, we need to do that for adoption. Yes, Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill number 24 dash 001, an ordinance establishing compensation allowances for the mayor, councilmembers, mayor pro tempore, and municipal judges with the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt Bill number 24 dash 001 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Is this gonna be enough to get you to, you know, stay? Oh, no, you can't. You're past filing, so. Alright. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted. Now, Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 24 dash 002?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 24 dash 002, an ordinance approving the 2024 Jackson County Board of Election Commissioners' poll contracts for Level Community Center, Harris Park Community Center, Longview Community Center, and the Gambler Center, and authorizing the Administrator of Parks and Recreation to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24 dash 002 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I now move for adoption of Bill number 24 dash 002, an ordinance approving the 2024 Jackson County Board of Election Commissioners' poll contracts for Level Community Center, Harris Park Community Center, Longview Community Center, and Gambler Center, and authorizing the Administrator of Parks and Recreation to execute the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 24 dash 002 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you read Bill number 24 dash 003?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 24 dash 003, an ordinance approving amendment number seven to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, is adopted by ordinance number 9704, ordinance number 9705, ordinance number 9706, ordinance number 9707, ordinance number 9708, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 24 dash 003 by Councilmember Shields. I moved to second reading, I'm sorry. We have a motion to move to second reading. Bill number 24 dash 003, seconded by Councilmember Demoral. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I now move for adoption of Bill number 24 dash 003, an ordinance approving amendment number seven to the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, is adopted by ordinance number 9704, ordinance number 9705, ordinance number 9706, ordinance number 9707, ordinance number 9708, by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 24 dash 003 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read substitute Bill number 24 dash 004?
I move to advance the second reading, Bill number 24 dash 004, an ordinance approving the execution of an addendum to the memorandum of understanding between the Kansas Bureau of Investigation, the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, for the use of Midwest high-intensity drug trafficking area, award funds, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the city.
You have a motion to move to second reading, substitute Bill number 24 dash 004 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It moves to second reading. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill number 24 dash 004, an ordinance approving the execution of an addendum to the memorandum of understanding between the Kansas Bureau of Investigation, the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, for the use of Midwest high-intensity drug trafficking area award funds, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second, or to adopt Bill number, substitute Bill number 24 dash 004 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to proposed ordinances first reading. Councilmember Felker, would you please read Bill number 24 dash 005?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading. Bill number 24 dash 005, an ordinance approving for an election of municipal officers by voters in the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, at the general election to be held on April 2nd, 2024, and providing that notice of said election be given.
Thank you. A motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24 dash 005 by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading unanimously. Thank you. We are on proposed ordinances second reading. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read Bill number 23 dash 243 for adoption?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption, Bill number 23 dash 243, an ordinance approving the petition for establishment of the Pryor Mixed Use Community Improvement District.
We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23 dash 243 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you all. Next, Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill number 23 dash 244?
I move for the adoption of Bill number 23 dash 244, an ordinance approving a plan for a Chapter 100 project for the Pryor Mixed Use Project.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill number 23 dash 244 by Councilmember Hodges.
I'll second, it's not coming up.
Councilmember Shields is second. And discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just reiterating that I'm, I would, and I like this project, however, I'm not in favor of the Chapter 100 element of this project by virtue of, or we need to reexamine that escalator clause. I think 3% every other year is an additional incentive I don't know that we need to give. And I know we've always, and I always do have the conversation, we as a council are fortunate to have staff walk us through where we're at in terms of setting that initial pilot. And I'm just still struggling with where we're at on that number. I know we've moved up. I'm grateful that it's greater than what it was in some of the earlier projects, so I'm, I'm voting no again in regards to that because of those reasons.
Thank you. With the discussion? None, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It passes seven to two. Thank you all. Committee reports. Whoa, we're committee reports. Councilmember Edson?
Thank you, Mayor. We will have CEDC tomorrow at 5:00 at City Hall.
Thank you. Alright. That'll take us to council comments. Yes, Councilmember Edson?
Yes, Mayor. I had asked David Buschak to provide us with some information on changes that the city has been forced to make in regard to publication of public notices. Could we ask him to give that explanation now?
Yes. So we're required to give notice, notice of public hearings and such? What else are we supposed to give?
Right, so this topic deals with the state statutes that govern the publication notices that we're required to do. To begin with, there's all sorts of different statutes that require public hearings or other events that require publication notice. The most common is zoning hearings, so any rezoning hearing, we have to publish notice 15 days before the public hearing for that rezoning. That includes preliminary development plans. We have to publish notice twice of, like, hearings on community improvement districts. We have to publish multiple notices for tax increment financing plans, land clearance for redevelopment authority plans. Public Works has to publish notice for various activities associated with road projects for public events where the public comes and provides comments to, to road plans and those sort of things. So there's a lot of different publication notices that we have to make. Each one of those requirements is a certain state statute, and then there's a blanket set of statutes in Chapter 493 of the Missouri statutes, which governs all public notices. A critical fact that's relevant to this is that the city now has more than 100,000 population. So there's a very specific statute in Chapter 493, which provides that any city that has more than 100,000 population has to publish all notices in a daily newspaper. And a daily newspaper is, has a very specific definition. It's published every day, or every day except Sunday and holidays, or any five days of every week minus any holidays that fall during that week. We have traditionally published all of our notices in the Lee Summit Tribune, but the Tribune is not a daily, is not a daily newspaper. The Tribune only publishes on Saturdays. One of the, I've had extensive discussions with the owner of the Tribune, and one of the arguments that we've, argument, one of the issues we've discussed is, does a daily presence online, such as on Facebook or some other electronic platform where they, they, the newspaper sort of puts something out there on a daily basis, does that qualify for daily publication? The answer is no. The statute that we're dealing with here in Chapter 493 dates back to 1909. So that was like six years after the airplane, airplane was invented. And so this is, you know, these are very antiquated statutes, but the idea of publication is, you know, you're issuing a newspaper, you're publishing it on paper, and you're releasing it for sale by subscription or on a newsstand, what have you. So an online presence, putting things on Facebook, putting things on other electronic platforms, is just not within the realm of what qualifies as publication. So unfortunately, the Tribune is not a daily newspaper, and we can't continue to publish notices in the Tribune. And there's another sort of companion statute in that same chapter, which very specifically says that any newspaper, any publication that happens in a newspaper by a city over 100,000, it's not a daily newspaper, is not a valid publication. So our hands are really tied in this situation. We, we have to publish in a daily newspaper. We've identified a few newspapers, which are daily newspapers, and we've moved to publishing our regular publication notices in one of those newspapers going forward. So like I said, I've had extensive discussions with the Tribune about this. I appreciate the fact that, and I, I knew this would happen, they obviously don't like that conclusion, but I think we're compelled to publish in a daily newspaper, and then we have to make this change going forward. And another issue that has been discussed is, you know, could the statute be changed? The answer is yes. Like I said, it's a very antiquated statute. It's over 100 years old, doesn't take into account modern publication methods, electronic platforms, anything like that. So if the Tribune were to pursue any sort of change to the statute, that's something that the city council or a committee of the city council could visit at the appropriate time. But that's the explanation of why we're making this change. I think we're compelled to do that under state statute.
David, so can we place those public notices in the Tribune in addition to the legal publications that you're talking about?
Yes, we, we can.
So we're placing like advertising?
Yes, we could. And that's a question that some of the departments have asked. The answer is yes, we could certainly do that. That entails additional cost, so we'll have to publish in a daily newspaper, and then publishing in the Tribune or in any other location is extra cost, but we do have some precedent for extra notice. Our zoning hearings, like I said, state statute only requires that we publish one notice 15 days before the public hearing in front of the city council or, or the Planning Commission for rezoning, but we also put notices on the property, we issue mail notices to property owners surrounding the property. That's all extra notice that the city council basically imposes upon the city itself, which is above and beyond what the, the law requires. So the answer is yes, we could also publish in the Tribune if that's, that's what everybody wants to do.
And did you get those numbers, David? I asked you to look at how much we spent with the Tribune in 2023?
Mr. Dunning has those numbers.
Or 20, okay.
Councilmember Edson, we did look into that, and what we found is, our total spend with the Tribune for a couple of years prior, so this is total spend, not just public legal notices, was between $7,000 and $8,000. And when I look at what we spend for public hearing notices, budget public hearing, those that are more legal notices, it's about half of that. So between $3,500 to $4,000 is our annual spend on, on that.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I, you know, this is, I appreciate city staff, you know, following the state statute. I understand that, but I, we, we also have a responsibility to be transparent with the citizens of Lee Summit, and I think spending a little extra money to place advertising on these public hearings and public notices in the Tribune would go a long way to us serving the citizens. So I would ask council to discuss this a little bit, and maybe we can find a way to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, comments on Councilmember Edson's request? Councilmember Pryor?
So I, I wasn't going to comment on that. I was actually going to say, happy birthday to Councilmember Hodges, because today's her birthday, and she doesn't really want anyone to know, but I think it's important that everyone knows, so. But I do have a comment on that. So I did, when Councilmember Edson was speaking, I did a quick Google search of daily publications, and The Pulse and The Kansas City Star both showed up. And I looked at, so I clicked on The Pulse, and I looked at their yearly subscription cost, and it's $420 a year versus the Tribune that I believe, I don't know, it's under $50 a year, I think 30 maybe. So the average person in Lee Summit, to get their news is not going to go, is not going to spend $420 a year to get The Pulse that I, I don't think anyone's really ever heard of. And then The Kansas City Star, I don't know that anyone really reads that anymore. But, and so, yeah, I feel like that, it's important that we, I agree with Councilmember Edson, it's important that we keep advertising in the Tribune, just because not everybody gets their news from. gets their news from Facebook and from the city website, or from even online in general. So I do think that publication in the Tribune is important. But yeah, happy birthday, Councilmember Hodges.
All right, thank you.
I think she should stand up so everyone can sing her happy birthday. I'm joking, I don't.
Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor, and very grateful. Councilmember Edson brought this to our attention. Mr. Buschak, you mentioned that the, the city imposes itself upon itself other requirements. Is that by ordinance that we've done that, or is that just by practice?
It's by UDO, so yes, by ordinance.
Okay. So I guess just, I'm grateful that we do that, grateful to Pryor councils for adopting that. And Councilmember Pryor mentioned The Pulse, which I'm pretty sure that publication is bankrolled by lawyers who buy that publication, because that's who probably reads it the most, because we get public notices from that publication. And are you in a position, Mr. Buschak, to talk about what publications we are anticipating publishing in?
Yes, The Pulse, that's the one. As far, as far as I know, there's three options. There may be more, but so far we've researched three options, The Star, The Pulse, and I think, I think the Independence Examiner. However, there's another nuance to this, which I, I didn't elaborate on. Every two years, newspapers have to receive a court order, Jackson County Circuit Court order, that says you are authorized to publish notices and, and other notices required by court order. The Pulse has an order, the Tribune has an order, presumably The Star does. I'm not sure about the Independence Examiner, that's a piece of the puzzle I haven't had a chance to look into. But you're, you're correct, what you just found, The Pulse and The Star are two options. The Star is tremendously more expensive.
Is there, is there some required geographic distribution in that statutory requirement?
Yeah, so basically, so this is where the answer gets a little nuanced. Some of the statutes say that the newspaper publication has to occur in a newspaper of general circulation in the area of the jurisdiction that's publishing the notice. And these court orders that are issued to the newspapers specify, in most cases, this newspaper is authorized to publish notices within all of Jackson County. So that covers almost all of Lee Summit, so there's sort of a, almost a one-for-one matchup between what the court order says and what we need it to say. Now we have the ex, another piece of the puzzle, which is the Cass County piece that we're still working on.
Ah, good point. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMaro?
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate Councilmember Edson bringing this to our attention. I, I believe also that we should exercise some, some action to include the Tribune in those notices. In, in, there are many instances, and I wish I could give you a number that people have contacted me, when they see those notices in the Tribune, you know, they, they, it, it brings to light that there is a certain development in a certain part of city, and they ask for more information. And they see it because of the legal notice, either from the legal notice on the planning commission's action or the city council meeting. So, you know, I do, I do consider the cost of The Pulse, even though it's probably a fine publication, probably prohibitive to the, you know, regular citizen in Lee Summit. So, yeah, I would, I would, I would ask that possibly the mayor pro Tim assign this to a committee for further discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So is this an issue that we were aware of well in advance? Like we, do we have any invalid notices or anything that we're concerned about with any hearings that have happened over the last, however long it's been since we were certified to have 100,000 population?
Let me look into that a little further. I don't know if I want to talk about that here right now.
Fair enough. Okay. Okay, I will put a pin in that one then. Who pays for publication? Like is that always paid by the city? Is it passed on to developers? I know there are some things that we have to publish as a city, our own things, but a lot of it has to do with.
I would need someone from like Development Services, they publish notices all the time. Don't know how that works. So someone, Josh, maybe?
Josh Johnson has turned his camera on.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, members of City Council, we do charge a legal notice publication fee when we collect fees for development.
Okay, so we would maybe need to increase that fee if we wanted to, or the city would need to foot the bill if we wanted to continue to publish in a second? I guess this is something a committee can hash out, so.
Right. Yes, it would have to be paid for somehow, and that would be a point of discussion.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to have this go to a committee for full discussion. I don't need to ask you a dozen questions tonight, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buschak, a few years ago, we, quite a few, like four or five, we have to, we have to put signs out, public notice as well, for public hearings on properties and such.
Correct.
And I do remember that we made the signs bigger, brighter, more, you know, just trying to clean them up, make them more legible, and then also we increased the radius. What's the minimum, Josh, Mr. Johnson, what's the minimum, or Mr. Buschak, you know, too, that we have to give notice to homeowners or property owners for our property?
So by state statute, there is no minimum, that's not required by state statute.
Okay.
There's a protest provision which provides, in state statute, which provides that if a certain percentage of the property owners around a property that's proposed to be rezoned within 285 feet file a protest petition, then it's a valid protest that heightens your vote requirement. And we previously sent notices to property owners within that distance, but I think we've increased it to 315 feet. And I'm looking, Josh.
300.
300 feet.
Yeah, I remember us increasing it because we were just trying to be more transparent to the property owners. Is that right, Mr. Johnson?
That's correct, Mayor. We made the sign bigger, we increased the radius notice requirement as well.
Okay, so if, in the sake of transparency to the public, yes, I'd like to see it go to committee, and you guys hash it out and figure out how much cost would really go up. Because if it costs $4,000 at the Tribune, I don't know how much it's costing at the Pulse, if they don't have a large distribution, but it might not be $4,000, it would be going up in that amount, so.
And we do have data on that, which we can talk about at the committee.
Yeah.
In the court order, there's, The Pulse has a cost per line, and then the Tribune has a cost per column inch. And I actually got out my ruler today trying to figure out what all that means, and I haven't figured it out quite yet.
Okay. All right, well, Mayor Pro Tim Lopez, do you got all that?
Got it.
All right, thank you, sir. Happy birthday to a certain council member, I won't say their name. I had some other council comment, but I can't even remember what it was after all that. Probably, next week, we're going to do a joint meeting with the Parks, and I just want you to know that we will do a little bit of business afterwards. We'll have, so that we don't, don't get stockpiled on our agenda items, so that we can keep things going forward. So should not be a ton on there, but I just want to make sure you knew that we would, right after that, just do a little bit of business before we conclude the evening. Mr. Denning, is there anything else I need to bring up? I've been trying to keep them updated on, just the EDC has been meeting with Councilmember Hodges, and Councilmember Edson and I, and a bylaw committee, subcommittee, task, ad hoc committee, if you would call it. We hired an attorney through recommendations and then vetted those attorneys to help us with the bylaws. Met with the attorney today. I wasn't in that meeting, because I had another city meeting, but it sounds like she's been engaged, this attorney, and she's going to incorporate the changes that we've made on the bylaws. I mean, the most significant things in the bylaws that we're changing are the membership, how many members, what kind of members, who do they represent, that type of thing. There certainly is a lot of cleaning up that needed to be done in the bylaws, but there's not significant something for me to, you know, point out. I think when we get all said and done, I can, we can try to summarize the biggest changes. There's a lot of wordsmithing going on right now. I would say that they're leaning towards, well, what we've talked about is doing, having a, an economic development board, council board, and basically only having an executive committee for emergency or urgent type of situations, HR type of things. So very similar to other boards, executive committee, but our, our executive committee right now basically runs the show based, based on the bylaws, and the board is not empowered. So this, these bylaws would empower the board. All right. Well, I will see you next week, and I don't think I'll be going to Jeff City before then, so I will let you know next week if, if there's a date and a time. What's that? Yeah, staff roundtable.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We do have a couple items. I'm pleased to introduce, she's here in attendance tonight, Diana Newman, as our Director of Information Technology Services. Diana is a Lee Summit resident, and we're proud that she chooses Lee Summit as her home, and she has well over 30 years of experience in engineering and technology, both in the private sector and the public sector. A lot of acronyms you may be familiar with, as AT&amp;T, EPA, Aquila, Olson Engineering. And recently, she's been serving since August of 2003 as a project manager within our IT, our IT department. So we're proud to welcome her to leadership on the management team and leading our information technology services going forward. So that's Diana back there, and so we're pleased to have her join, join us this evening. I thought it'd be appropriate to have Michael Park give you all a brief update on our snow fighting efforts. This is a unique one that we're fighting, as we talked a little bit about earlier, and then I think Michael has kind of some public information on another project that he would share with you, so.
I'll start with that, after following a gripping conversation on public notices and where we publish those. So while the UDO doesn't really dictate how we publish notification on our capital projects, we're rather regulated by the state statutes and, and some of the federal regulations and grants that we get, we do, and we are committed to advertising about The Pulse and the Tribune, just for your awareness, as Public Works, we've made that decision. The projects pay for those costs, and wherever those project funds come from, that's the source. But we do have a, a project meeting, a public hearing, if you will, that's what we call them when we do these notices, for Douglas Improvements, that's from Second Street North to Chipman Road, Olive and Orchard, and Orchard Street, it's really west of Douglas to Olive, then Olive North to Orchard, to Chipman. So that public meeting for those projects will be in this room from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on the 18th, that's a week from Thursday. So just kind of trying to get the word out. You're all welcome to attend, take a look at the plans. There will also be an online presence for those projects. We welcome people to, to take a visual review of the plans, submit their comments, if that's their preferred form. Have any, are there any questions on that project, too? But I did want to talk a little bit about snow and our operation. We, as Mayor had said, we've received accumulation over six inches. Really, I think measurements, we're seeing anything from five to eight to nine inches. Heavier snowfall in the south part of the city compared to the north part of the city. Also with winds, sustained winds over 30 miles an hour, so we really have kind of moved from our level four to level five event, blizzard-like conditions, and that's really what we're, we're struggling with, is a lot of those winds blowing that snowfall back into the roads, revisiting plowed areas and having to replow those areas. We start on our primaries. We're done with our primaries, and we've been into the secondaries for the last few hours. We should be done with all of our secondary routes, those are kind of the collectors getting in and out of the neighborhoods, and into the neighborhood streets sometime overnight and all day tomorrow. We have an expectation to be done, as Mayor Baird kind of mentioned, a 40 to 48 hour total response time from the time that snow ended. It ended around 2:00, you know, this afternoon. So our, our expectation is to be done and have the roads cleared before the Thursday morning commute. So all roads, all operation done. Unfortunately, we're also expecting then another snow, around the snowfall late Thursday. But a lot of kudos to our crews, they're out there operating as best they can. Many of them have never done a snow operation. They've gone through training, they've gone through dry runs, and in fact, probably over 75% of them have never done an event of this scale. You look back the last two, three years, we never really had more than two, maybe two and a half inches in a single event. This is pretty significant, and kudos to them for working hard. We have 27 of our operators out running full 24/7 shifts, and 13 trained non-operators out helping in the snow fight. And they're doing a really good job, and we appreciate it. And I know you all appreciate the hard work that they're doing, and appreciate our residents giving them a little grace. As I said, this is new to a lot of them. So far, they're all smiling, and I hope after this long event and the long weekend that's ahead of them, that they can, continue to come back to work. So that, that's a big help, as well as to our customer service staff. We have been manning our phones, and first thing that came in this morning, we were already taking phone calls about when their neighborhood was going to get done, or it had already been missed, and it was only 8:00 AM. So we're working on it. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We, we do recognize that, yeah, we're going to see a lot of blowing snow, it's going to get a lot colder overnight, it's going to see a lot of refreezing. We do have a couple of trucks that dedicated to go out and hit those hot spots and to go hit those areas again while they're working in the neighborhoods, try not to pull anybody out of the neighborhoods as best we can while they're working overnight and tomorrow. We're also getting a lot of reports of downed trees. With this, it's a very heavy snow, so heavy that, you know, it's shearing bolts on some of our snowplow blades and wing plows, but it is going to cause some downed trees. If it's a downed tree in the street, call Public Works, we will be out there to try to remove that, that hazard that's in the roadway or on a trail or sidewalk. If it's a downed tree on a power line, or you see it's touching and sagging a power line, call Evergy. You can also call our fire department, our emergency first responders are in coordination with Evergy to try to help get them out on scene and resolve those, those hazards. So just know with this kind of event, we're dealing with a lot of that, too, and down power lines, down trees, people are out of power. Any questions on the event itself and what's going on? I could also speak to kind of the forecast and what we're seeing for late Thursday night, Friday, and some really frigid temperatures over the weekend.
Oh, boy. Yeah, we heard about that because of the Chiefs game.
Yeah. Yeah, bless anybody who can make their way out to that Chiefs game, it's going to be really cold, but we'll win anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. It's to our advantage.
Yeah, Miami's not used to this kind of weather.
Love it. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I need somebody to read this into closed session, please. Yes, Councilmember Shields?
Pursuant to Section 610-021-1 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, I move for closed session.
Thank you. I have a motion moving to closed session by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion. Being done, could I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Felker?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Edson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye, thank you. See you.
Yeah, I wondered. Okay, so withdraw my vote, and I would recuse, or yeah, recuse from participation.
All right, we have eight ayes and one recusal. We're going into closed session, everybody, or going in at, what time is it? 8:12. Everybody have a good night.[1701.42]